Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors regular meeting for April 23rd, 2024. This meeting is called to order. We will begin by going into closed session. Madam Clerk, would you please read the items?
Before we report out from last closed session first, please, thank you.
Thank you.
A report out from April 9th, item one, pursuant to government code 54957B1, public employee annual performance evaluation title, county executive officer. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Board action, no reportable action taken. Closed session for today, April 23rd, item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, County of Calaveras versus De Scornia Ranches and Limited Partnership at All, Calaveras County Superior Court case number 20CB45113. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Item three, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Teresa Hitchcock, Marcos Munoz, and Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organizations: Service Employees International Union Local 1021, Sheriff's Management Unit, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union, Unrepresented Employees.
Thank you. We were going to have a general public comment when we begin our regular meeting. Is there any public comment regarding these closed sessions, three closed session items? You have 30 minutes.
30 minutes?
30 minutes.
Thank you. I heard 30 minutes there.
Nope.
You're sure now, okay. First off, it's good to see your smiling faces. This is just wonderful. Everybody's here and in a good mood. It must be the weather. The weather's just been fabulous. I'm going to take on number one, and I accidentally know about this. I'm going to take on number one, and I accidentally know about this. They're using the property, the contractors are using the property as a staging area. And I heard about the amount that's being paid, and it's just not, you know, attorney fees, you want a, you want a, you want a good attorney, you want a partner, it's going to cost you $600 an hour. So you're paying, I think it was in the neighborhood of $45, $4,500 for that, and it's just, it's just not enough. You guys have to really up that. You're giving preferential treatment to preferred vendors, preferred contractors on that job, and that is costing the county a lot of money, a lot of money. So when it comes to something like this, look favorably on those people. I'm going to move on to number two, okay? And the reason I want to talk about number two is I don't think there's really an understanding, I don't think administration really understands how this works. You have $50,000 discretionary fund to make something go away, to make, to cure a problem that maybe the county has caused, and it quietly goes away. You, if attorney gets involved, they're going to look at your deductible for your self-pay portion of your insurance, and they're going to say, okay, we want 50%, $100,000. It's going to end up being $50,000 to the, to the individual because there's going to be other things involved, there may be pain and suffering, there may be loss of use and other, other issues. If it's a smart attorney, they're going to say, they violated your civil rights. Other agencies become involved. You're looking at a very public and very, very costly settlement. Of course, the, the insurer is going to want to settle early, but it's still going to get on to the public. So that's the way you handle a, a situation, and you remind administration of that. Don't just, don't just take it for what they say, because there's more than one, there's more than one interpretation of what's going on. Okay? I thank you for this time. Four, three, two, one. Have a great day.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment, or comment online?
There are no online public comments.
Thank you very much. We will now recess to closed session. Good morning, and welcome back to the Calaveras Board of Supervi- shh, thank you. Good morning, welcome back to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for April 23rd, 2024. If you, if you're able, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Should I just stop and leave?
Thank you, Chair. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as the law and the law and the principle of liberty, justice, and
Thank you very much. I will move to staff announcements.
This is a time for county staff to provide updates to upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Lisa, got a few things to share. Come on up.
Good morning, Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Our first Calaveras Animal Services adoption event took place at the Calaveras Airport Days during a very wet and wild day. Wizard was adopted by a wonderful human and her little boy that day. He went straight home with his family and probably stayed drier than the rest of us. We also had, at the same time, a free FOCUS rabies vaccine and microchip clinic. Dr. Alyssa Burnett and her students came from UC Davis to help us out. With the downpour, 116 rabies vaccines and 55 microchips were given. So many thanks to Dr. Alyssa Burnett, her team of veterinary students, FOCUS volunteers, and staff for enduring the wettest clinic ever. The next free rabies and microchip clinic will be given here at the Government Center Saturday, May 11th, from 9:00 to 11:30. Our next adoption event is taking place this Saturday, the 27th, in Murphy's for the Murphy's Mutt March, I have to say that three times real fast. Animal Services will be there with a few of our adoptable pups. Please come by and visit, and you can march home with a furry friend. Animal Services will be planning adoption events throughout Calaveras County, so if you have an event where you think one of our pups may be able to go home with a human family, please let us know. We are planning on having kittens and cats at future events, but we have to work on those logistics. Our volunteers mean so much to Animal Services. We cannot continue to care for our animals under our care without the help of our volunteers. Last month, our cat volunteers gave 99 hours, and our dog volunteers gave 637 hours of their precious time. We cannot express enough gratitude and sincerely appreciate every little thing they do, and not only for our animals, but for our staff as well. Very truly, that's heartfelt. Animal Services will be introducing a new phone tree system at the end of the week. We are doing this to make it more efficient and to enhance our commitment to providing excellent service to our community. That is all I have.
Thank you very much. Is there other staff that would like to make an announcement? Mr. Oliver?
Good morning, Chair members of the board. Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official, I just wanted to announce a new program we have completed as far as permit streamlining. This is in regards to the agricultural building streamlining that your board directed us to move forward on a few months ago. That program is in place now. This program applies to agricultural structures that are in agricultural zonings and rural residential rural ag zonings. This program removes the plan review from the process, bearing in mind that these occupancy types are very low hazard to the public. So the applicant can come in with the appropriate number of plans, they can schedule an appointment at the counter, we don't submit the plans for review. We make sure that in about, you know, half hour, we review the plans in front of them, make sure that they've hit their basic structural targets, make sure the fire codes are met, and then we accept them and route them to the other departments, saying that the plan review is essentially complete. We do everything else in the field from there on. So what that does for the public is that takes the fee down from approximately $2,000 down to a fee of, and I had it here, the fee is $875, and there's a couple of other departmental fees if they review, like public works, that'd be another 145. So that's a significant reduction in the plan review, or the, the permit fee. It also saves approximately three to four weeks of circulation time in the review process. So everything else is conducted in the field. There are some limitations. The limitations are, in addition to the zoning, the maximum size of the building can be 5,000 square feet, which is pretty significant, and it does apply to anything that is not human occupancy. So you can't have an office or employee work area in it, but if it's a barn, shed, silo, livestock, greenhouses, equipment storage sheds, things like that, this significantly cuts down on the process, and it applies to any construction type. So instead of just being limited to metal buildings, any legitimate code construction type, if, if you're required to get engineering, okay, we make sure you got the engineering. We're not going to do a deep dive into it. Your contractor's going to do all that work, we're going to check it in the field. So that is in place. Our, our staff are running it now, and if anybody's interested in participating in the program, they can contact our front counter, they'll guide you through the process.
Thank you very much, Doug.
Thank you.
Other staff announcements? Any staff announcements online? Oh, come on up.
Hi, I'm Sarah from PATV. I'm a TV programmer. I want to thank you very much for having me here today. Since the last time I was in the board, PATV has been waking up and doing amazing things. And our team has grown. John, who is manning the studio right now, Sam is out shooting a community meeting, and Susan, who is filming this community now, has been a huge help in this development and growth of PATV, and I cannot thank them enough. We have been updating cameras, our switching system, and our playback system to help give the best quality content to our viewers and community. With these updates, we have been able to grow and bring in more outreach programs such as the film, our Future Filmmakers Club, the Creators Hub, and we have also been able to help with the development of community content with other departments, and we are now beginning to map out the future of PATV. Now, with a lot of our progress, it is still in development, and we are hoping to have more visual products to show in our next staff announcements or in the future, but with, one of the most important crucial steps in any production is the pre-production stage, and it feels like PATV is in that pre-production stage. So we have been meeting with the Public Health, the Sheriff's Department, and the Animal Shelter for future projects to help get information out to our community. Public Health has blocked out the second and fourth Friday of the month to come into the studio to work for a couple hours on projects such as podcasts, PSAs, and any other creative project that they need to help with their department. We are there to help educate them on the equipment and the space and be able to help in any way to make their projects successful. We have talked with the Sheriff's Department about an upcoming project, and, sorry, I'm a little nervous, and going into the film, film-to-film equipment demonstrations such as Project Lifesaver and the safety, and safety PSAs for the community. With the Animal Shelter, we are developing a 30-minute show that will air on both our broadcast channel and YouTube called Wags to Riches, and this show will showcase a handful of adoptable pets with each episode to the community so we can talk about their personalities, and then we're also hoping to do a short segment on their happy endings of them going to their forever home, because that's our goal, is to get them adopted. Our youth program, the Future Filmmakers Club, even though it just started a few months ago when Eva and her daughters came into the studio to learn about media, it is in full stride. This club is geared for middle and high school students, both homeschooled and public schooled, with their Mondays group starting at 4:00 and Thursdays at 2:00. This program is developed for the youth to work in all stages of production, from concept to distribution, and these kids in this program are absolutely amazing. They're already working on two different projects and two different scripts. Our Monday group is working on a 30-minute program called Camp Learn-A-Lot, so think Saturday Night Live meets DIY. These kids have created their own characters who will be interviewing individuals and local businesses in our community to learn a new skill to demonstrate on their show. Our Thursday group is learning all about marketing in our community, and they are in developing a promo for our club so people can know what they are about and also how to help. Both groups are learning about broadcasting, lighting, and anything else to make a successful TV show. In attendance of this program, we have about 10 to 12 youth members and growing. The other club that has been growing is the Creators Hub, that has grown from Wednesdays to now also Saturdays with about 20 members. We meet the third Saturday and the fourth Wednesday of each month. This program is created to give the community a place to network, skillshare, and create. There is also a presenter from the group who usually has a skill that they would like to present, and they share it, and then they create a tutorial to help. Teams are beginning to form from this group, and they are already producing tutorial videos to help other creators. PATV has also been filming community meetings such as the debates, emergency livestock videos, and the park and recs, master plan meetings that just happened these last couple weeks, and we plan to be at many more to help keep the community informed. We have been working with CCTV and the Film Commissioner on bringing the Wild and Scenic Film Festival back to Calaveras County in September, and we continue to help our other local producers make content such as Tech Player Alert, Senior Moments, and we are even in works with adding a few more shows this spring and late summer. We also have a grant with Health and Human Services that we have, that we have our senior tech training for our seniors, where they come in with basic senior tech questions, and we try to help them through it. We have had questions about smart TVs, their smartphones, computers, GPS, and social medias, and we have our regulars who come in once a week, and also our drop-ins. Now, even though it's far out, we're already talking about Christmas and with a possible Santa visit and storytime. So overall, PATV is picking up and not slowing down, and we are excited about the future projects and programs that are taking flight, and without the support of my team, JV and Administration, the board and other departments, and also, of course, the community, PATV will not be making these huge achievements without them, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Are there other staff? Are there other staff? I'm sorry. Are there any staff, other staff announcements?
There are none online.
Seeing none, we'll move on to recognitions and acknowledgements. We'll start with number four.
Item four, proclamation, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, adopt a proclamation recognizing the 2024 valedictorian and salutatorian from Bret Hart High School.
I think you have to pass the gavel to Supervisor Fongard.
Thank you, Chairman. Board, Sophia and Aurora want to come to the podium while I read this. Good morning, Gosh.
Good morning.
So, whereas each year, Butthurt High School selects one student with the highest grade point average to be the valedictorian and one student with the second highest grade point average to be the salutatorian, and whereas the course were completed is difficult and the competition for such an honor is highly competitive, these students serve as a role model for their classmates, is it on? For their classmates and underclassmen through, through critical thinking, effective communication, problem-solving, and organizational skills. And whereas, in addition to achieving the highest and second highest class rank, these students have demonstrated many qualities such as integrity, hard work, determination, and commitment to excellence throughout their four years in high school. Whereas these students are honored at their high school graduation ceremony, but because of the achievement is so significant and worthy, the Calaveras Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize them as well. And whereas the Butthurt High School valedictorian for 2024 is Aurora Lewis, congratulations, and whereas the Butthurt High School salutatorian for 2024 is Sophia Bowman. So with that, I will open it up. I see there are some parents in the room and others, faculty from Butthurt, to, for public comment.
It gives me great pleasure to present these two. They make us very proud. To give you some idea of the competition between these two, we had to go to four digits. Okay, four decimal places separate these two. They've been in this battle for a long time, they're good friends, but when it comes to academics, they're sworn enemies. Until now, now they can figure it out and move on with their lives. I'm both thrilled with them, going to Duke, going to Williams, they are going to be bright stars for Calaveras County.
Are there any other comment? Nope, okay. And I'll bring it back, and at this point, therefore, is there, I'll bring a motion, is there a motion to pass this resolution?
I'd like to make a quick comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, I just want to congratulate you both. I mean, you represent the best that we produce out of our counties, and, and I really appreciate the work, and I hope you guys go to, go off and do great things in school and Duke and Williams, and then come back to our county. You could have one of these seats up here. And congratulations.
Thank you.
I would like to congratulate you two. Good work. It's very difficult and very trying sometimes, I know, but good job, great outcome, and again, wherever you go, whatever happens in the future, come back to Calaveras County, please. So with that, I would like to make a motion.
Do you second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, therefore, be proclaimed the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, commending student named as valedictorian and salutatorian for the Butthurt High School class of 2024, and their impressive accomplishment. It's passed today, this month of April, 2024. Congratulations, Gosh. Okay, one, two, three, two.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Let these guys exit. All right, Madam Clerk, we'll move on to item number five.
Item five, proclamation, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, adopt a proclamation declaring April 2024 as Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month in Calaveras County.
Thank you. I'll pass the gavel to Supervisor Stoppa.
Thank, thank you, Chair, Gary Mindy. CJ, good to see you here today. I'll go ahead and get started. Whereas Sikhs have been living in Calaveras County over two decades and in the United States for more than 120 years, and during the early 20th century, thousands of Sikh Americans worked on farms, in lumber mills and mines, and on the Western Pacific railroad lines. And whereas Sikhism is the fifth largest religion in the world, and today there are more than 25 million Sikhs worldwide, and an estimated 500,000 Sikh Americans. And whereas Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and make rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, including service as members of the United States Armed Forces and significant contributions to our great nation in agriculture, information technology, small businesses, the oil industry, trucking, medicine, public service, and technology. And whereas Sikh Americans distinguish themselves by fostering respect among all peoples through faith and service, and whereas Calaveras County is committed to educating citizens about the world's religions, the value of religious diversity, tolerance grounded in First Amendment principles, and a cultural, a culture of mutual understanding and dimin- diminution, yeah, diminution of violence, and whereas today, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors seeks to further the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experiences of Sikh Americans. Is there something you'd like to say, CJ?
Good morning, honorable members of the board. I'd like to start off with go bullfrogs. I know there was a couple of bullfrogs in here before. I'm a Bret Hart alumni, my brother's a Bret Hart alumni, so great to see some alumni here. Thank you so much for your continued support of this proclamation. I know this is our second year doing this. My family has been in this community for almost 20 years now. When we moved to Calaveras County, there was two other Sikh families in this community. We haven't grown much, there's only six others now. We make up for less than half a percent of the population of Calaveras County, but our goal is to be a big part of the community. You know, we're small but mighty, giving back in ways that, you know, anybody needs, and we're just so grateful to be a part of Calaveras County. You know, as you, I think, I think, as I say doctor all the time, but Mr. Gary Mindy said, you know, going away and coming back. You know, my family moved up here when I was in the fifth grade, went to school. As most high school kids, Calaveras County was not my appetite, and then I was like, I'm out, I'm never coming back, and here I am in front of you, and, and this place is just amazing to live and work. So for anybody that's here, you know, it's a great place to live, so thank you all for, for being here and, and supporting us with this.
Absolutely. Any, any further public comment? Okay, um, appreciated, CJ, you know, you're, you're over on the other side of the, the county now, so you don't have to go bullfrogs too hard. It's all to the roots, and, you know, I, when I, when I left out, out of high school, I also ended up coming back. It's not so much of a mistake at all anymore, you know, it's a good thing, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 to be Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month in Calaveras County.
That's fine.
All right, we're going to move on to the moment everybody's been waiting for, general public comment. Madam Clerk?
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30 minutes allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued at, as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Okay, everybody knows this drill, it's three minutes. If it's an item related to the agenda, I will stop you and we'll wait for that agenda item. If it's not, begin.
I'm sorry that we don't see our friend, Mr. Butner, here today. He's usually here to do what I don't do. I won't, I'm here because I had to handle a discreet item. There's no need in bringing members of the public into a situation. So that's the way we handle things. But while visiting the county this morning, I got to visit with some of the department heads. And I probably spend more time talking to the county than a lot of people in the community. I was very pleased to talk to Mr. Maurer, Peter. And I had to apologize for not seeing him up in Murphy's. But while I was there, I came across this wonderful guide, the U D, A U, A D U guidebook. And it's full of helpful information. And you said, received, the county's received several awards for it. And I was just looking through and it's very detailed in the glossy pages, and I'm very pleased about that. I'm a little off today. Cecil, Cecil Williams, the pastor of Glide Memorial Church in San Francisco, passed away yesterday. And my early life was spent reading Albert Schweitzer and watching Cecil Williams do his good work. When I go home to San Francisco, I make a right-hand turn at Glide Memorial Church and I go up the hill and I pass another church, which is Grace Cathedral. Glide Memorial is where all the politicians and notable people of San Francisco could go to do their good deeds in front of the camera, serve meals, so forth, while Grace Cathedral is where they actually attend services. So when I pass that, I pass, go up to Russian Hill. And top of Russian Hill, I go up four flights of stairs to a penthouse apartment. It looks over the, a lot of San Francisco and the Bay Bridge and Coit Tower. And I'm reminded by that little trip, that little right-hand turn, what I see in front of me, that I'm not particularly smarter than anybody. I was just born into a situation where I had opportunities. And I think we all should remember that, that you've all had opportunities and that have brought you to the place you are. It's not necessarily that you're smarter or better than anybody else. So Cecil Williams, good guy. I can't claim to have known him very personally, just in passing. Albert Schweitzer, I would never have known, he died long before, before I was born. But the good works, good works are important. And all of you should be. Anyway, I'll get going.
Thank you. Rob?
Good morning, world. My name is Rob Williams. I'm the Vice Chair of Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee for District 10. I'm also the founder of the Motherlode Bike Coalition and we're affiliated with Cal Bike, the California Bike Coalition. And that's important because as I talked today about the new HAWK light system for the Murphy's Crosswalk, it's important we come back to Cal Bike. So I don't know how much the board knows, but I'm here to thank the board members that supported the request to Public Works to apply for HISIP funds, the Highway Safety Improvement Program funds, to put a HAWK light system on Pennsylvania Gulch. It'll make a big improvement to, to helping kids get safely across. This issue started in October when my daughter and granddaughters were crossing Highway 4 on Pennsylvania Gulch and on a Halloween night. And my daughter saved my, my granddaughter's life. And so anyway, the, the HAWK system, after that incident happened, I went back to BPAC and I said to the chair and members of the eight counties and Amanda, we need to do something. Make a long story short, on April 10th, we had a meeting. The meeting ended at 2:00 and a light came up and Charles, the chair, said, you have five minutes. And in four minutes, the Caltrans said, this money is yours. All you have to do is apply for it. So make a long story short, Public Works is in the process of applying for the money. I found out, because I was in San Diego on a Friday afternoon, important because Cal Bike was sponsoring the Complete Streets session that I was attending. And they talked about doing all the things that we're doing up in Murphy's and San Andreas and Valley Springs to get complete streets. Today at 1:30 is, the Cal Bike is going to be leading a hearing to get the Complete Streets funding through Caltrans and make sure that Caltrans sets objectives, follows through this time with getting the governor to sign out our bill. So the Motherlode Bike Coalition is part of Cal Bike. We support all their legislation and I'm very excited that this project, the Cross Street HAWK system, is just one of our projects together. Let's get our complete streets built. I just want to finalize by saying that at the state summit, we have the best Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee in the state. We also have a brand new director. So for us in Calaveras County, we're poised to get these complete streets done, pending the governor signing off in today's meeting at 1:30 at the state summit. So thank you and thank you, board members, for helping us. And if Public Works was here, I'd thank them too. Thanks. And I think there are some people from Murphy's on, on Zoom. I don't know how to.
We don't, we don't do public comment from Zoom.
Oh, you don't?
For the general public.
Okay, well, hi there.
Thank you, Bill. All right. Terry, come on down.
Good morning, Terry McBride, Mid-California State Senator and Committee Chair. I wanted to let you know, there's, you know, so many of us that question the legitimacy of the elections, especially of late. We are hosting Professor David Clemens, who produced the movie Let My People Go, here in Roseville on May 8th from 6:00 to 9:00. And I will send you links because if you want to know what's going on, look at the other side. So whether you agree with it or not, you should always look at what the other side's saying because there could be some truth there. And this David Clemens is something to listen to. His knowledge is up there, he's considered one of the most top, one of the best experts in elections in America at this point in time. The other good news, because I think that's good news, the information's getting out there so we can get our country back, is did you see this with the US Supreme Court? This says, the US Supreme Court crushes California impact fees as an unconstitutional taking. So whether you're aware of this or not, and I'll send you that link too, so you can read up on it yourselves. I would hope you're aware of it. So we, as the citizens of this county, are wondering, are you considering terminating these impact fees that have just been ruled unconstitutional? And, and removing them completely? How much in impact fees have you charged over the last 10 years? Has this county charged, and in fact, I believe it's 12 years? If you're not going to terminate the impact fees, how do you plan on justifying them as a fee rather than a tax? Because the Supreme Court saw it as a tax, so it was unconstitutional. And have you set up a process to handle refunds to residents that were inappropriately assessed impact fees in the past? So this is good news for builders, for people that have built home, building homes, and folks that want a little bit more transparency and honesty within our money collection system within the state and the county. And since I actually have 50 seconds left, what I want to suggest, I mean, look at our elections and look what's going on. I really want you guys to look at the southern border. It's not good. And so we have to do something. And one of the greatest ways is within our election system, New California, we'll be doing another election here coming up in the next few months. We're anticipating New California coming into being this summer. 51st state. And so we look forward to working with our supervisors very much. I know you all, most of you. And then the other thing would be, and I just thought, forgot it, because I signed 17 minutes. Anyway, I want you guys to have a great day. Know that things are changing. Do please come to this David Clemens. He's going to be in other areas and nothing else. Look at his information on the internet, on Rumble. Information that you need to know. Thanks so much. Bye.
Hello, honorable members of the board. My name is Debbie Powell and I work for the University of California Cooperative Extension as the Master Gardener Coordinator. And I'm really excited to share with you just a couple of things that the master gardeners are doing. We have our 17th Annual Kids' Day in the Garden event, which is coming up on May 11th from 10:00 to, 10:00 to 12:00. And what we're really excited is that we'll have 16 stations for the kids. They all come to the garden, everybody is welcome. We try to encourage everybody throughout the Calaveras County. And even beyond, we've had people come from other counties too. But we have a great collaboration with a lot of other agencies. We have First Five there. We've got Public Health, they're going to be doing booths. And then we also have members within Cooperative Extension. We've got 4H, we have CalFresh, which, those are different entities within Cooperative Extension. But they're all participating. So if you're free on Saturday, May 11th, we'd love to have you there. The other thing that the master gardeners are doing is that the Demonstration Garden, which is, you know, of course, right across the way, they now, and they have been having it open every single Thursday. The times vary, they just changed their times for their summer schedule. And they're open 9:00 to 1:00 PM. And that gives everybody from the community a chance to explore the garden. There's master gardeners available to answer plant questions. And believe it or not, we have lots of plant questions. They also sell plants there at that time. All the plants are locally grown. We're very fortunate that we've got so master gardeners that are growing plants available to sell there. But then also we have a part of that garden, which they call the propagation area, which they are propagating and growing plants that are suitable for our area. I'm sure everybody probably has had the experience of buying a plant outside of the county. Maybe if I should mention a box store or something like that. And they get it home and it just doesn't do well. One of the reasons is that it's not adapted to this area. They also have during, on Thursdays, a free seed exchange. So you're welcome to come and pick out seeds, either for your own vegetable garden or flowers. And then, you know, maybe sometime in the future, you would also share your seeds and bring it back to the garden. And I think that's about it. So I just want to really thank you for all your support. And I look forward to maybe seeing you at the Demonstration Garden.
Thank you. Sir?
Good morning, my name is Russell Lenhart. I'm a licensed land surveyor in the state of California. One of the rare people around. There's very few of us left. You know, we've lost some pretty major people in our county in the last 10 years or so. You know, big loss was Dennis Weeby recently. You know, I, I say recently because it's still a large effect on the, on the profession. And we just recently also lost Gene Leatherby, which is another major effect on our profession. And I don't know what you guys know about surveying, but I need to clear up a couple of things about it. And then I'm going to propose an invitation that you investigated a little further. Because I think we have some real serious possible compromises to the public record that are in play right now. So first of all, there's a mis- misnomer or a misunderstanding about what a surveyor is versus what a civil engineer is. A lot of people think that surveying is some subset of civil engineering. And the fact is that civil engineering is a subset of surveying. Surveyors came first. Surveyors did the largest civil engineering project ever done on the planet Earth. The public land survey system that set every half-mile point across the whole country. Think about that. We subdivided the whole country into sections. Half-mile points were set across the whole country. Surveyors did that. There were no civil engineers at the time. Civil engineers were designing bridges and doing several things. And they didn't have any regulatory board. And so people were getting killed by their designs because there was no governance over that regulation and how they were doing their designs. So what they do, they brought the civil engineers under the surveyors' board. Because the surveyors' board was set up in law to make the liability for errors lie on the surveyor personally. And that's true to this day. And it's true for civil engineers, it's true for the county surveyor. That liability for the surveyor applying the law is on the person, not on the corporation or the limited liability corporation or the LLC or whatever it is they're, they're practicing under the business. The surveyor actually has to be the owner of a business. It can't be a subcontractor because of that liability issue. So the issue of what surveyors are is, is one of law, not necessarily one of science or physics or the art of measurement. The colleges now are teaching a thing called geomatics, which is measuring the earth. And we have this amazing technology out that has transformed the whole practice. The old-school versions of how things were done, the legacy surveyors that basically raised this county and all passed away is gone.
I'm sorry, you're, you're out of time.
All right. Well, I'd like to propose an invitation to you to investigate this further. We've got some serious problems with the, the public record right now and the use of GIS instead of GPS or surveying. And these are things that are done by the county itself in, in the sheriff's department and, and et cetera. And I need to make sure that this is heard.
I, I understand. I, I understand. Perhaps a break, you could chat with, with some of us more.
I'd like to, I'd like that.
But we do have a rule of three minutes, so I don't want to be rude to you.
I knew I would be too long. And that's because I'm pretty passionate about what I'm saying. So thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Your other public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Eva.
And my name is Sienna Harrison.
And we are here to represent Calaveras Community TV. And I just want to tell you a short story how we got involved with the community TV and how we want to support it. Two years ago, my daughters entered middle school and they also transferred from public school system to the homeschooling. In those two years, I discovered that there's a gap in the extracurricular education and social landscape for kids aged 12 to 16. This age group is in a very crucial juncture in their lives where they are exploring and maturing their passions and capabilities and being challenged by real-life problems. Yet often they face limited avenues for growth, development, socialization, and self-expression, especially in less affluent communities like ours. When I approached Sarah from Community TV with the idea of creating a program to fill that educational gap, I was amazed by the support and the enthusiasm. And two months later, we have a group, a thriving group of, of 10 kids, and the group is growing, who are the seeds of the Future Filmmaker Club. The project provides a comprehensive training in videography, editing, storytelling, acting, and the list goes on. The skills are not only valuable in today's digital age, but also foster creativity, critical thinking, and teamwork. And we so much need this in today's world. I love how this place intertwines multigenerational, multi-generational knowledge transfer. And I also love how creatively inspired my daughters became since joining this club. And they participate two times a week. As a mom and as an educator, I see the value of Calaveras Community TV. And it is enriching local environment by adding college-level educational for our kids for free. local environment by adding college level educational for our kids for free. I hope we can show the value to the community as well and bring more and more and more people on board. Thank you.
And I too grew up here in Calaveras County and quite proud, actually. My husband grew up in Topeka County and then we moved back east for graduate school and stayed for twenty-four years. We've moved back to help take care of aging parents, both in Topeka County and Calaveras County. And I had some real misgivings about moving home only because we were living in Washington, D C and had a wealth of cultural experiences and educational experiences available to our children. Moving back was a difficult transition and trying to reach out and figure out how to provide those things for two of my children who are homeschooled and one who goes to Brathard. And finding public television, public access television has been really enriching. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other public comment? Anybody in the room? Welcome.
Hi. I'm Natalia and I'm here to represent the Future Filmmakers Club. I think the Future Filmmakers Club is really awesome and I really enjoy being a member. I love writing, acting, coming up with characters and scenes, and we get to do all of those things at the Future Filmmakers Club. Since my mom started homeschooling, my sister and I were always looking for extracurricular activ- sorry. Extracurricular activities. And so far, I've learned a lot from the Future Filmmakers Club. I've learned about the hero's journey, how to write a script, and how to operate some of the equipment. There's still so much to learn and I'm so excited too. We're also always looking for new opportunities to make friends. Even my mom made a new friend that she talks with every time we're there. Being in the Future Filmmakers Club has also taught me a lot about socializing and I've also learned a lot about myself just through talking with other people my age. The Future Filmmakers Club is a place where we get to learn valuable real life skills and is a great place to hang out with like-minded people. I'm so happy to be a part of it all. Thank you.
Thank you. And well done. It's not easy to stand up in front of a board and speak. You did it with great courage and.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Well spoken. Very well spoken.
Come on up.
Hello, I'm Evelina and I'm also a part of the Future Filmmakers Club. And it's been really great. This club is giving me and other kids the opportunity to express our creativity through all the different aspects of filmmaking. And it is also teaching us to work together as a team. Plus, this club has given me the chance to make a couple of friends, which has been a little of a challenge for me recently since I'm homeschooled and a little shy. This club has been an awesome addition to my life and I'm always looking forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
Well done. Parents, you should be very proud of your children. Other public comment in the room? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you. Are there any board members that'd like to pull an item off consent agenda?
Twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two.
Twenty, twenty-one. Twenty-two. All right.
Chair, I'd like to pull fifteen and twenty-four.
Fifteen?
Fifteen. Twenty-four. Other items? All right. Any member of staff like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Any members of the public that'd like to pull an agenda item? Anybody online?
There are no online requests.
Okay. Seeing nothing else on there, is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
Move.
By Supervisor Fallendorf, second by?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five oh. We will start with item fifteen.
Item fifteen, agreement behavioral health, authorize the board chair to sign amendment one to the agreement with Aurora Behavioral Health Care for specialty mental health services increasing the amount from two hundred thousand to one million three hundred thousand for the two-year period of July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Supervisor Hubbard, you had questions?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Wendy. My question is, I mean, it's such a dramatic increase. Is this something that, I mean, I read the Aurora contract, but is this an accumulation or do we, are we actually just needing, I mean, because it's almost an increase of six hundred nights or six hundred day nights?
It is a backdated contract. There is an individual that has been placed there who's conserved and we have no other placement. And so, yes, it is partial back and to cover going forward.
Got it. Thank you. That was.
There are other questions from the board? Any public comment on this item? Seeing any online?
There is no online.
Seeing none? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Supervisor Hubbard. Is there a second?
Second.
Supervisor Stopper has a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Items number, item twenty.
Item twenty, action item, Public Works. One, adopt the plans and specification for construction of the twenty twenty-four paving program for District One Roads, District Five Roads, C S A one, C S A four, and C S A twelve. Two, authorize the director of Public Works to incorporate any final changes into the bid documents before advertising for bids. Three, authorize the Department of Public Works to solicit formal construction bids. And four, find exempt from CEQA.
Supervisor Stopper, you have questions?
This goes hand in hand with number twenty-two, some of the things I have. We sat down and discussed conglomerating roads into certain areas so that we could stretch our dollar, get more payment, not have to move equipment around. Went back over the C S A one roads, for example, all over the place again, not where we discussed about earlier. I mean, in between, let me just go right here. We discussed, you know, down by West Hill, doing an area down Seagull, Pardini area, closer to Jenny Lynn, which there's a few roads over there that are being done. But we have roads. Sorry, I need to go make sure I get my list right here. We have stuff up by Hartvixen. Was it? Here it is. Brooks Road, it's up by Hartvixen, kind of like next road over from where I live, completely the other side of Rancho Calaveras compared to the other roads down near Jenny Lynn. I could go down a few of these. I mean, they're, some are within the same area, quite a few of them, you know, for the C S A ones, got spread out satellite. Now, we're at this point now and I want this stuff paved this year. I'm not going to have you go change it again because if we go back again, then we're not going to get it done this year, which is, you know, one of my biggest issues. But it's not what we sat down and talked about earlier specifically, and it's changed since we would talk about. And also on this one, as I brought up last week, or last meeting, two weeks ago. Again, there's a authorizing the director of Public Works to incorporate any final changes in the bid documents before advertising for bids. That means he can change it again.
I can speak to that piece.
I know there's certain things that they may need to be changed, but you know what? It's an overall encompassing statement that lets him do whatever the heck he wants and goes off the subject of what we've been told he can do.
Okay, I apologize. That may have been my mistake. I thought the previous issue was with language about changing the plans and specs.
Right.
Which we, which were not, so we didn't use that. And so I think the intention with this was just the literal bid documents, but we can certainly revise that language.
It just leaves it open-ended again, the way it's written. Subject to interpretation.
We could, we could say something like other than the plans and specs or that plans and?
I get it. There's a certain amount of movements that need to be made for when we're going out for bids.
Yeah.
But overall, it's just like, they could change what roads they want to pave, just the way it's written. Subject to, don't shake your head, Emily, please, because it's subject to interpretation. You know, might not be your intention, Robert, but it's subject to interpretation. But that, all in all, when you say you're going to do something, that's what I want to see done. That's my thing with number twenty, but which goes into number twenty-two also. Can I, should I go through these one by one?
Would you like to do it one by one or we could combine twenty and twenty-two if that's?
Well, twenty-one's got an issue with it too. Adopt a list of projects proposed to receive S B one road maintenance rehabilitation act funded for twenty-four and twenty-five. And this happens to go over districts four and district five, you know, which benefits her. I read location. We're adopting a list of roads that basically is various county roads within the community of Copperopolis, various county roads within the community of Valley Springs. This is the list of roads that we're accepting for the S B one. It's not specific. I.
Let's, let's, we have broader issue.
Can you answer, can you answer what is specific? Because it says here, Robert, that we're, adopt a list of projects proposed to receive S B one road maintenance. Where's that list of roads?
That list is in the C I P. The C I P is, is part of this altogether, yes.
Okay.
Do you have your questions on twenty-two as well?
Well.
I'm thinking, Ben, I'm going to try to lump these into.
I know, I know, I know. Well, the twenty goes into twenty-two. The S B one roads in here, again, they have like Main Street, Jenny Lynn. That's one of the S B one roads.
For this year.
For this year.
Yes, sir.
And then you have listed Hartvixen and Baldwin for next year. With the Hartvixen and Baldwin ones, are those going to be able to be done next year with the other special districts that have work to be done? Those won't be necessarily ready to get done at that time, will they?
We're working with C C W D, working on a schedule to see if they could get done next year, yes.
With that, with that money, I mean, let's just say that gets the can kicked down the road again, most likely, just because of their timeframe and getting projects done. And then also, you know, last time we talked, that the Vista del Lago project got ended up being paid by P G N E because all the work they did there. Where are those S B one funds going being used at the time when they're not being done in district five?
Well, for Hartvixen.
That one would, Vista del Lago would be split between district one and district five, so.
That's correct. There's still.
Where did those go?
They're, they're all accounted for right there in the district five roads and we could give you an accounting of that. As far as Hartvixen is concerned, if for some reason with the C C W D work, it can't be completed next year and it's completed the following year, that fund, those monies stay right there for that Hartvixen road. They don't get moved to anywhere else.
Those roads have been sitting here since I've been on the board, waiting for these type of projects being done while other, other districts get roads done. Now, I go back and I rethink something I said before. Garner Place and Kirby Street were two S B one roads that were done. But other than that, you know, we're waiting, yeah, that money gets set aside and nothing gets done in district five while continually year in and year out, other, other S B one funds are spent in other districts.
We could. We could give an accounting of the roads that were spent, that the funds were spent in district five.
Okay.
We'll send that over so that you could see that.
Okay. And, and how much, let's do, when you do that accounting, do how much was spent for every other district and send it to me also over the last six years.
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
Any other questions? I have a quick question. On item twenty-two, the C I P can be changed at any time, correct?
Through resolution, yes.
Through resolution. This board can adjust that?
Yes.
Any day we want?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have item twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Supervisor Stopper, do you have more questions on that or would you like to lump them together or take them?
That's, that's fine. Lump them together.
You want to make a motion?
Go ahead if you'd like, sir.
All right, is there a motion to pass item twenty, twenty-one, and twenty? Real quick. Is there public comment on these three items? If you have public comment, if you please step up to the microphone.
Just need to.
Please come up to the mic.
I just need to Calaveras County. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I need to Calaveras County. I've been here for six years. I don't know about too much about the lingo, how you guys spend the money on our roads, but I've been calling our county about my street several times. My street looked like a quilt. They've been patching all over and the rain and the heavy trucks and everything continue destroying my street. The only thing that the city did is put the two white lines on the side. So that makes it look like a pig with lipstick, right? So that was really no good for our street. Water leaks damage also the street. So I don't know how long it's going to take to fix my street. And it's Kane Lane. You said that there was some work done in Cox Street? You mentioned that?
Brock, Brooks.
Oh, Brooks. Well, Brooks goes through Kane Lane. And, and I'm just curious how the money has been spent correctly through our cities because we want to care for everybody in our district or in our county. So I'm really concerned how, or how long it's going to take for my street or other street because it's also a safety hazard for our cars, for anything. So that's all I have to say.
You can, that gentleman right there is the head of Public Works. You can ask him. We're talking about C S A one roads when it comes to Kane Lane.
And that's the funds?
Those are the funds, yes. Yeah, and it's a pool and it's the community that puts it, puts it together there. I, you can also, I can get, have someone give you one of my cards. You can contact me. I live right down the street from you also.
Okay.
On Kane Lane, so.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Very well. Is there other public comment in the room? Is there any comment online?
There are no online public comments.
Is there a motion to accept item number twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two?
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Toffinelli. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fallendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you. Moving on to item twenty-four.
Item twenty-four, action item, sheriff. One, accept a one-time augmentation of grant funds in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and seventy-two and nineteen cents from the California Department of Parks and Recreation, Division of Voting and Waterways. Two, approve budget transfer form for the increase in allocation of revenue and expenditures in the Marine Safety Budget Unit one zero one zero zero three six zero. And three, authorize the sheriff's office and purchasing agent to issue purchase orders to acquire a scan. to acquire a scan sonar device and boat metal cart port for the boat, boat barn. Two new capital purchases and include these capital purchases in the official fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget capital asset request list, requires a forfeit affirmative vote of the board.
Thank you, Supervisor Hubbard, you had questions?
Thank you, yes, and this is silly, but on the procurement, and because this document goes out to the public, I just wanted to confirm that the fish finder device is not actually, you're not gonna go out fishing.
No.
It's actually for safety.
It's a sonar device, it's technology, so we can search for uh evidence, um drowning victims and so forth.
Super, thank you very much.
Well, Sergeant, we'll keep, we'll keep the binoculars on you guys, see if a pole goes over the edge of the boat.
Sorry about that.
The fish swallowed the evidence?
Thank you, is there any, any further questions from the board? Is there any, any public comment on the item? Is there any public comment online?
There are no online public.
Very well, bring it back for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Moved by Supervisors Hubbard, he's second.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carries five zero. We're gonna take a, we're gonna take a five-minute break and come back and start with regular item, agenda number twenty-five. Thank you. Uh, we will also begin with item number twenty-five, Madam Clerk.
Item twenty-five, resolution, Public Works, conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution of necessity finding and determining the public interest and necessity require the state route for wagon trail project. The project is planned and located in the manner most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. The extension of two temporary construction easements, one seven two five five dash seven on parcels, assessor's parcels numbers zero five three dash zero zero seven dash zero three two, and one seven two five seven dash four on parcels, assessor's parcels number zero five three dash zero zero one dash zero one eight for two additional years and is necessary to compete, complete project, construction of the project. And a seven two six seven point two offer was made to the owners. Adoption of, and the resolution is necess- resolution of necessity requires a forfeit affirmative vote of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, uh, here's how this is gonna work, we're gonna conduct a public hearing and we're gonna bring it back to the board for a vote, so we will have presentation, uh, we'll have a present rebuttal by the, by, uh, Tuscanyia Ranches, and then we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for a discussion and a vote. That work for everybody? All right. So, um, who is presenting this item?
Um, I, I, my understanding is that Mr. Pakenger is, I don't know. Shall I? Uh, if you don't mind, Stacy, thank you. Thank you, Stacy.
Pardon delay, everybody, just hang in there with us. Robert, we're on item twenty-five, think you're presenting.
Good morning. Um, this item is just the extension for the temporary construction easement for the, for the coming construction season that we have, and we, we hope to extend it an additional season so we can monitor what's happening there along the boundary. But that is what's before you at this point, I understand that there is a um presentation that will be provided, but as, you know, as far as we're concerned, as far as our, as far as our item is concerned, the um um, hearing, the, the public hearing is.
Robert, can you wait one second? I am formally opening a public hearing. Thank you, I should have done that beginning of your item, my bad, please continue.
Okay.
I, you have to do the.
Thank you. So the, this is the, the public hearing for that item that um we will be discussing the temporary construction easement. Okay?
Okay. Tuscanyia Ranches, you wanted to do a presentation, we have, I'll watch you ten minutes, please be respectful of that, I try not to hammer down on you in ten minutes, but if you could stick to that, I'd appreciate it.
Very good. Good morning, Board Chair, Garmendi, Board members. My name is Garrett Wrights. I'm co-owner of Diablo Engineering Group, I'm a licensed professional civil engineer in the state of California. I have thirty-five years of experience, and my specialty is managing complex transportation projects for cities, counties, transportation agencies and Caltrans. Over ninety percent of my experience has been working for the citizens of California on public, through public agency contracts, and I proudly maximize the value of available grant funding and local tax dollars to collectively improve our transportation system. Occasionally, I provide my expertise to private entities, and today I'm before you, representing the Tuscanyia Ranches. I am the family civil engineer and I work closely with the family's legal team. We came here today in a spirit of cooperation to work out what is fair for both parties in getting this project completed. We recognize that the county needs to finish this project as soon as possible. You know, and we know, that the project was originally bid to be done in one construction season, and you had a contingency for lingering into the second construction season. We're now entering the third construction season, and you want another contingency to roll into the fourth construction season. We were originally conveyed that this was a nineteen-month project. Um, it really appears that the county is vulnerable to uh expensive construction claims that are around the corner, and we're concerned about that. I know that you are as well. I became involved in this project in twenty twenty, in February of twenty twenty-one. The county initially communicated to me is that there were certain milestones that needed to be achieved. December eighth of twenty twenty, uh, there was a resolution of necessity that started the eminent domain process. Few months later, I started. May eighth was conveyed, May eighth of twenty twenty-one, the county needed right-of-way certification from Caltrans. June twenty-third of twenty twenty-one, California Transportation Commission needed to be consulted to convey, uh, to obligate funding for construction. January third of twenty twenty-two, we were to commence construction. And then July thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, we would finish construction, nineteen months. All of the above noted milestones were achieved except the last one. Throughout this period, Tuscanyia Ranches and the county negotiated in good faith to achieve these critical milestones. The county was successful in getting everything that they wanted. Right-of-way certification, possession of Tuscanyia Ranches land, funding to construct the project, and the opportunity to achieve all of those particular milestones, and the most important one was to finish the project on time. Tuscanyia Ranches has not interfered or caused any delay associated with the county's construction project. In fact, Tuscanyia Ranches has positively assisted the county and the construction contractor to support the completion of the project as soon as possible. We want the contractor to finish and get out so that we can get back to doing ranching. In addition, Tuscanyia Ranches has exercised great restraint and been very patient in dealing with multiple mistakes in oversight by the county team. I have a long list of the mistakes that have been made. I'd like to state a couple of them for the record today. An example of how Tuscanyia Ranches has helped this project's schedule. December twenty-third of twenty twenty-one, just a few days before construction is going to start, the county decide, or uh discovered that they had made a critical mistake for their construction contract and the schedule. After all the planning, the communication, the analysis, the county realized this mistake and came to Tuscanyia Ranches. The first thing is, is that, you know what, we're not gonna be able to construct the fences as we promised you in writing. And we have a problem because we have the nesting birds, so we have to cut down fifteen hundred trees in the next six weeks, and we need help. So the county requested Tuscanyia Ranches to relocate all the cows out of three of the four fields that are adjacent to the roadway project. This is across thirty-seven hundred acres. Tuscanyia Ranches provided the documentation for the cost associated with this, and the county agreed to pay Tuscanyia Ranches for the services that would greatly help accelerate the project to complete, be completed in nineteen months. Between Christmas and New Year's, Tuscanyia Ranches performed the task. The county has not paid Tuscanyia Ranches for these construction-related services that were provided solely to benefit the county's construction schedule. The second example is, is that on May seventh, twenty twenty-one, this is eight months before the construction started. Tuscanyia Ranches and the county executed an agreement in front of the court. The agreement provided the county with what they needed was the constru- uh possession of the property and uh to be able to get the construction funding. Some of the conditions in this document, uh, Jan- uh, Tuscanyia Ranches could keep using that land until January first of twenty twenty-two. Then they needed to vacate. And the county explained that we needed early access to the land to perform utility relocations, cultural surveys, and geotechnical exploration, and these were critically important to achieve the nineteen-month schedule. The county was also responsible for installing all the fencing. Uh, it, that was to, around the, the area to be acquired so that Tuscanyia could continue doing ranching operations. Finally, the county is responsible for maintaining all the existing fences. The failure is by the county team. First of all, utility relocations didn't actually commence until late twenty twenty-two, what was the point of getting early access to do utility relocations? Uh, the utility relocations, when they happened, actually delayed the contractor. One of the key points is, is that eight months before construction, the county had possession of the property, and they failed to perform extremely important cultural resources investigations. The archaeologists were not deployed out onto the project site until after the contractor mobilized. That was one of the biggest problems in this project, is that that activity did not happen for eight months. When no one was working out there, all this could have been done to solve a lot of these problems. So the archaeologists were not deployed until after you had your contractor out there. The county failed to uh timely install the required property line fencing to contain the property that was acquired. And today, today, uh, the, s- some of that fencing still has not been installed. And that was a promise in writing that was supposed to be the first order of work. The fence is not being installed as a benefit to the county. This long-term, the failure of the fencing has allowed county personnel, contractors, subcontractors, subconsultants to meander on to Tuscanyia Ranches property. This is private property. Uh, the fence installations delayed and negatively impacted the ability for the ranch to actually perform ranching operations. Unauthorized people also um cut down trees that they weren't supposed to, that were on our property. They searched for archaeological artifacts on our private property, and we have evidence of that. Uh, tribe personnel also described that other people were out there disrespecting the rights that the county procured to do the work, and they wanted to make sure that we knew that it wasn't them doing the in-deeds of venturing out onto Tuscanyia Ranches property. Uh, the county continues to use Tuscanyia Ranches' private property. Uh, these areas were obviously needed, um, and the county should have secured additional temporary construction easements if that's what needed to be done to support the project. Throughout the construction, the county is obligated to maintain drivable access to all the legacy gates throughout the project area, that's also in writing. The county has blocked the access to the gates on multiple occasions, and I'll give you a really good example, in November of twenty twenty-three, one of our gates was blocked, we do not have access to it. We alerted the county, December fourth, there was a field meeting, and personnel from the county promised a quick action to remedy this situation. As of today, Tuscanyia Ranches does not have access to that gate, that's irresponsible. Prior to executing the May seventh agreement between the county and Tuscanyia Ranches, the, uh, Tuscanyia Ranches asserted is that, hey, you need additional temporary construction easement. How can you build a fence on the property line and not get on to somebody else's property? We were denied uh that uh action in the beginning. And then, uh, so we, we explained that, you know, the, the county has a responsibility not only to construct those fences, uh, they need to maintain those fences, and they need to inspect them for uh final conclusion of the project. Um, in nineteen, in twenty twenty-two, uh, we did sit down with the county, and there was a realization that, oh my gosh, we do need an additional five feet on, uh, adjacent to all the property that was acquired across the ranch. Can we please have that? And we worked that out, it's in writing, you have access to that additional five feet of temporary construction easement because you need it in order to finish the job. The res- the resolution before you today indirectly conveys that the team has been out there and they've constructed the proper, uh, the fences on the property line, they don't need to be maintained anymore, they've been finally inspected, and specifically, the county has no need to use that additional five feet. This is simply unrealistic. Note that the county originally required nine temporary construction easements for this project. And then they acquired an additional five feet everywhere that the property was uh acquired. Uh, the project hasn't been completed yet, and somehow the team is confident that they, that you don't need any additional temporary construction easements. Tuscanyia Ranches, I, I need to state a couple of facts, Tuscanyia Ranches owns all the land underneath the existing highway. Tuscanyia Ranches have been paying taxes on that land for many generations. Um, I have a specific example of why we're here and why there seems to be this contention. Is that, uh, the Pearl Station project in two thousand and nine, Caltrans knocked on the door and said that, hey, you have a sixty-four acre parcel and we've appraised it at seventy-four hundred dollars an acre. This is in two thousand and nine. And you also have a five hundred and two acre parcel that's appraised at thirty-six hundred dollars an acre. The appraisers, appraisals were certified three times over three years by the Caltrans team through the eminent domain process. Then eleven years later, in twenty twenty, the County Public Works Agency appraises the same identical parcels as twenty-five hundred dollars an acre. It's very interesting that the county assessor increased the property taxes because property values had increased over that same eleven-year period. I believe your constituents would react similarly to the Tuscanyia families, that how is it possible that the county's eminent domain authority and preparation of appraisals can be so much stronger than the Caltrans process that happened eleven years earlier? The item we're considering today is adoption of a resolution to extend the temporary construction easements. There's really some important pieces that you, you, I hope that you, you understand, is that on March seventeenth, twenty twenty, the county prepared an appraisal, and in that appraisal, it said that we need to impact and buy a portion of the Tuscanyia Ranches property on six legal. and buy a portion of the Tuscorne Ranches' property on six legal parcels. And two of these parcels were the identical parcels that Caltrans had also purchased a portion of in eleven years earlier. The county said in this appraisal report, this approximately sixty-eight acres is appraised at twenty-five hundred dollars an acre. But the same land that I mentioned that is underlying the existing road, the appraiser said that that has zero value. So we've been paying property taxes on that land, and the county says, we don't have to pay for it. We're just going to take it for free. During that, the appraisal also says eight-point-seven-five acres to acquire nine temporary construction easements at two-hundred-and-fifty dollars an acre per year. Then, December eighth, this body held a round hearing. And in that round hearing, all of the reference documents in that round hearing purport that the county only needs to acquire a portion of five part-legal parcels from the Tuscorne Ranches. So it went from six to five. Spring of two thousand and twenty-one, the county realizes the mistake that the resolution and necessity that this body took was saying that there's five parcels is now changed that we really need to buy a portion of six parcels. August thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, the county and Tuscorne Ranches entered into a second agreement to settle the construction impacts, assuming a nineteen-month construction schedule, and long-term cost-accuror impacts. And both parties agreed to defer to a jury trial just on cost per acre for the easements and the right-of-way. Then on July tenth of two thousand and twenty-three, county and Tuscorne Ranches were in front of Superior Court Honorable Judge Sanders. We failed to achieve settlement. But an important thing that happened during that meeting was that the county purported to Judge Sanders that the county recently determined that they only needed to acquire fee, fee, fee land from Tuscorne Ranches from four legal parcels from the county. So we went from six to five to six, and now four. December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, I reached out to the county to confirm how many legal parcels there are needed for the Tuscorne Ranches. The county, as I said, it, obviously, for over three years of communication, the county still had no idea how many legal parcels are being impacted by the project. And it appears that the county is deliberately changing the number of impacted parcels to further delay our final settlement. Tuscorne Ranches communicated how important it is for determining this number because the county appraiser and the Tuscorne appraiser need to be working from common factual information. Tuscorne Ranches has had their appraiser on hold since September of two thousand and twenty-three, and it usually takes three to six months to get on their calendar. So we're trying to hold our spot, but we can't have them start until we know how many legal parcels there are. So today, you're trying to extend temporary construction easements for two of the, of the original nine, and you don't want the extra five feet of temporary construction easement. Please know that all the land associated with temporary construction easement, so when you require temporary construction easement, you need to return it back to its original condition when you give it back to us. You're borrowing it. So for those other seven temporary construction easements that you used, but you no longer need, they need to be returned back to their original condition. Restoration is required by May seventh of two thousand and twenty-four. I went in and inspected these areas yesterday. Your contractor has a lot of work to do in the next nine working days. In fact, I would suggest that it's impossible. Please confirm with staff after I speak, what is the plan that's in place to restore the Tuscorne lands back to their original condition? Because you're done using our land. They need to be returned back to the original condition. Please note that the county originally procured temporary construction easements in the vicinity of the pool station project, or pool station intersection. The temporary construction easements were originally identified as parcels one-seven-two-five-seven-dash-two, The wagon trail construction has not been completed at this intersection. I suggest you confirm with staff that the previously proposed construction at this intersection has been deleted from the construction contract. Hence, the county did not need, and still does not need, the two temporary construction easements that were originally planned to construct the improvements at this intersection. Please confirm with staff that the construction contractor has been informed of the previously required temporary construction easements along the fence lines has been terminated, and that the remaining fence, and the remaining fence construction shall be constructed completely on the county side of the property line. I assume the contractor will want to change order for this work. So I have a suggestion today. Is that it would be better for the county to extend all nine original temporary construction easements. And the additional five feet that was needed for constructing the fences and doing all the other work is that we originally said you needed that. You denied it, and later, you said you needed it. And now, today, you're telling us that you don't need that. It's very confusing. I suggest the board direct the staff to finalize the determination of the number of legal parcels that have been impacted by the county's acquisition of fee simple land. This important information should have been determined at the very first offer four years ago. It's extremely concerning, but the required information has not been available to the Tuscorne Ranches team. And this information is required in order to achieve the negotiations for a global settlement. The board should direct staff to deposit all the agreed-upon settlement funds into the escrow account. We have an agreement from August of two thousand and twenty-
Excuse me, are you about wrapping it up?
I am, I'm very close. Thank you for the extra time. So the board should direct the staff that the agreed-upon settlement funds be deposited into the account. We have an agreement that has dollar amounts in there, and the county has not deposited that money into the escrow account. We want to make sure that you have the money in order to settle up. Furthermore, the board should direct staff to release those funds out of the escrow account to, the settlement funds that are directly related to the mitigating of construction impacts. Tuscorne Ranches acknowledges that the original agreement from August twenty-two, that the settlement funds would not be released until there is a global settlement after the jury trial. However, the county is delinquent in providing the necessary documents in order to negotiate and reach a global settlement. The extended construction schedule from a nineteen-month project to approximately a forty-five-month project has placed additional and unexpected financial burden on Tuscorne Ranches to further accommodate the construction-delayed project. Finally, the county continues to benefit from prior actions that Tuscorne Ranches performed, specifically benefiting the construction contract. The county promised to pay these settlement funds at a later date, but the date keeps changing. The date keeps being extended out to no actions of Tuscorne Ranches, but all actions and inactions associated with the county team. The right thing for you to do is to release those funds that are directly related to construction impacts, things that have and will benefit your contractor to finish this project as quickly as possible. The subset of items are fully applicable to the county's failure to deliver. I came here today to express cooperation and work on what would be a fair settlement for both parties. With the release of the funds and the determination of the correct temporary construction easements are needed for the project, Tuscorne Ranches is not looking to slow down the project. We want it completed as soon as possible. Cooperation is order, and these delays have hurt both parties. Thank you for letting me speak past the ten minutes. Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, I do have copies, please.
All right, is there rebuttal? Does any staff want to make any comments on that or board questions in this public hearing? Mr. Pakenger?
Yes, if you have questions, I'm ready to answer.
Any questions from the board? Any public comment on this item before I close this public hearing? Excuse me, if you'd like to speak, if you could come up to the microphone.
This is, like I said, my first time. This is my first time being here, and I'm very sad for what you're going through. I just mentioned that I moved from the Bay Area to here, and it's beautiful place in here. And we need to care for each other. I just want the whole members, you all guys, to think of, are we treating our neighbors as ourselves? Are we doing things to others how we want to be treated ourselves? I just, my heart aches for this gentleman, what he's going through, because that doesn't show friendliness to one another, and it doesn't encourage me to do business with our county. So that, that to me, I just want you to ponder, to meditate on how we can treat one another to make this county flourish and honor God by it.
Other public comments in the room?
Sorry to get up, but this is, what I hear is a derivative of what I was trying to allude to earlier. It's one of a litany of issues going on in our county that are directly related to surveying. And the county surveyor position and the level of authority that you guys seem to believe that he does or doesn't have. This dual role that's Robert, that Robert's playing as Director of Public Works and also as county surveyor, it's an impossible thing to do with the levels of technology and the way things are being done, with the way Caltrans works and different public works departments works and engineering firms work. It can't be done. And me, just listening to that little thing I saw, you know, with my experience, I've worked in that area. I know a whole lot about this county as a surveyor. I could fix that legal parcel thing in less than a day. And I'm the only person here that has that authority, except Robert. And obviously, he hasn't taken that advantage and done that. That's a critical thing to do at the beginning of a project. And setting up the management of a project is critically related to the surveyor. Just as the route surveys for the railroads coming across the country were all dependent on the surveyor. They chose the routes. That's how it works. So all the dimensions of the program, all the, all the different layouts that you do, that's all survey work. I could solve those problems. It could have taken me less than a day to do that legal parcel thing. I don't understand that. So anyway, there are lots of problems like that. I could go on forever and explain to you the different problems that have gone on in this county related to public works, related to Cal Fire, related to the sheriff's department, related to the pot growing, related to, I can go on. So this is just everywhere. It's everywhere right now, and it's growing. I've got five projects right now. I've got two testifies opportunities in court coming up. It's, it's obnoxious. My job is overwhelming now. And I'm the only one here in Calaveras County, except Lee Nadal and Gary Dever. That's it. That's our Calaveras County surveyors. Gary Dever's recorded, what, ten maps in the last fourteen years? Lee Nadal's retired. His son Scott got licensed, and I think he's left the state. I'm sure they left. Anyway, I won't go on. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments in the room? Seeing none, is there any public comment online?
There is no online public comment.
Very well, I will close this public hearing and return it to the board for discussion. Any further discussion? Yes. Supervisor Paulendorf?
This isn't easy for either side. Talked to Garrett a couple of weeks ago now. We had a pretty good conversation. There's been things that the county did not anticipate related to archaeology, cultural discoveries. Last fall, we did go to the CTC, but those delays are out of our control. And we're hopefully working with the property owners to, not just Tuscorne Ranches, but across the highway for understanding those delays to, to continue this project because I think everyone in this room wants it to be done like yesterday. I don't think that is, but I, any construction project, there are things that come up. And in this case, it was a lot of surprises that came up that no one anticipated to take this long to resolve. Aside from what Garrett has brought up about the global settlement for today's purposes, for, in order for us to move forward, we've got Caltrans feedback on the wall, which is in these vicinities of these APNs. And if we do not go forward, we're going to only hinder development of that wall, which is the protection of the cultural resources that the tribe had told the county in order, to do in order to mitigate these resources. And in that area. I want, I don't want to delay this any further, and I want to get this going with the information that the county currently, the board currently has. And I, it's not an easy place to be. But if we delay this, it only will cost all the taxpayers more. It'll be more burdensome on the ranchers. It'll further delay their operations. And I don't want to be coming back next year having to have the same discussion because we, we have not been, we weren't able to make a decision today. So aside from the comments about global settlement and what is going on in front of a judge, just for today, for Ron, I, to continue the construction project, I'm going to have to go forward with supporting Jeff's recommendation at this time in order for us to go forward.
Other comments from the board? There's a tough rally.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I echo the sentiments of Supervisor Paulendorf. I, I, I understand the issues. Some of them, we may have had some control over. Some of them, we may not have had control over. Certainly, the amount of cultural artifacts were there, even though if archaeologists went out there ahead of time, once we started disturbing the dirt, they couldn't have seen what was under it. And some of the things we found, that, that's held us up and prolonged this, this project, the lengths, mostly all of that, the length of the time we have. We had to go back to CTC and ask them for fourteen million dollars to go forward on this project. And you guys, you sat there, and when you said about finishing the project, we all want it done, and you all shook your head, yes. If we don't go forward here, and you don't work with us, Cole, to at least get it finished, please, it's going to just prolong it and just make it more of a misery for everybody involved. So please work with us here on this. We'll, we'll do what's right, try and do what's right as we can, what we can. But right now, we need to finish this. We're going to, we could shut, it could possibly shut down construction. And then we lose this whole year, the time it takes to get back going and the cost of it if we just don't have these easement access to continue forward. And we would like to work with you on that to get it done. There's certainly not beneficial for any parties at all if we don't go forward with it, just to get this thing done as we move forward. So I, I ask for you to at least work with us on this. Thank you.
Other comments from the board? There's a stopper.
I hear my colleagues, I mean, definitely unforeseen things on projects is kind of typical of any, any construction for the most part. But at the same time, I do have questions on, and I think there's always a better way- and I think there's always a better way of managing a project. And I think that there are certain hurdles that we could have definitely managed better going forward. And, you know, not to take away that, you know, the can of worms that did get open when it came to cultural resources is a reality. But I foresee us needing to take a good look on how we proceed forward with future projects and how they're managed.
Other public, other comments from the board? I'll add my comments in that, you know, this is, I don't like the fact that we're in litigation with our neighbors. I'm frankly not real happy with this whole project. And I feel like I'm backed in the corner, because we don't have much time, and this whole thing could stop. So, I have grave philosophical concerns about this. But I also feel like I'm in a corner on this. So, is there, if there's no further discussion from the board, is there a motion?
Move.
It is moved by Supervisor Folander. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
District one?
Aye.
District two?
I'll wait to the end of the chair.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
No.
District two?
There are times you have to take votes on things you just don't believe, but that is to keep for the betterment of the county where we're going. And so, I reluctantly vote aye.
Passes four one.
Passes four one. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 26.
Item 26, Resolution Administrative Office, approve a resolution of the County Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, authorizing the County Executive Officer to execute agreements with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for implementation of Measure A in local transaction and use tax.
All right, Madam CEO?
Chairman Germiny, with your permission, I'd like to take items number 26 and number 27 together. They're both administrative requirements in order to implement Measure A as passed by the voters on March 5. The first item is to-
Let me ask, is everybody okay with combining these two items? Thank you.
Okay, item number 26 is to allow me to execute the standard documents in order to implement Measure A with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. Item number 27 is to provide the county with opportunity to examine tax records in the future as this tax is implemented, to make sure that those taxes are correct for our, for support of our fire departments.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the board? Public comment? Danny, want to say anything? Nope? Very well. Is there other public comment online?
There is no online public comment.
Very well. Can I have a motion to accept item 26 and 27?
So moved, Mr. Germiny.
Moved by Supervisor Stoppers or second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose carries five oh.
Five in.
All right, we'll move on to item 28.
Item 28, action item building.
Let's go.
One, introduce and waive first reading of an ordinance repealing Chapter 9.22 of Calaveras County Ordinance Code related to cannabis background clearance badges. Two, find ordinance exempt from SEQA. And three, authorize a summary publication of the ordinance.
Thank you. Doug? Would somebody else like to present on behalf of the building official? All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back here at 11:05. Excuse me, 06. Welcome back. Have we already read the item in? Doug?
Chairman, Members of the Board, Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. What I bring before you today is waiving the first reading of a county ordinance that would repeal Chapter 9.22 of Calaveras County Ordinance Code related to the cannabis background clearance badge. As your board recalls September 12, 2023-
Doug, do you wait one second?
Oh, my apologies.
They stepped out. I'm so sorry.
It's okay, they're going to come right back.
I can wait.
We'll wait.
We got time. You had to wait for me, so it's only fair.
They were here before.
Yes.
Sorry?
No problem.
Ready?
We're good, okay. So, your board on September 12 of 2023 heard a presentation from the Building Department, just an overview of the cannabis program. In there, we outlined a handful of the programmatical issues, some streamlining recommendations, and some challenges that were happening in the industry, in the department, in the program itself. And one of the items that came forward was what to do with the cannabis background clearance badge program, or CB-CBs. In that discussion, we did identify a series of challenges that I can go through in just a moment to reiterate what happened in that previous meeting. But after hearing from the Building Department and getting comments from the Sheriff's Office and a few other departments, your board gave us direction to bring back this item to repeal, 9.22. Currently, the program has processed 1,031 applications for these clearance badges. Of those, only 20 have ever been denied. Thirty-three of those have since become inactive just from people, and, you know, leaving employment or what have you, and just not renewing their cannabis badge. For the public, the CB-CB program was a badge program that was meant to identify workers and employees in the cannabis industry, to identify them as being through a background check process and having not been found to have any convictions under a list of items that would be directly related to safe operations of cannabis cultivation. In the process of our department triaging the cannabis program, the CB-CBs, initially, in the onset of the cultivation permit program, there was a lot of education, there was a lot of people coming in that didn't know they needed badges, and there was a lot of work to get people involved in the badge program. As it is now, we don't have that type of issue. We may occasionally, when we spot check somebody out in the field, we may have one person, may not, may have just gotten hired, has their application in or didn't know they needed an application, and so they come down, they get their application, they get everything going. So, it's not a significant issue as far as violations. There occasionally a bad actor here and there, but we pull them back in. So, it's no, hasn't presented as a health and safety issue on permitted cultivation sites. The reasons for recommending that this be repealed, as per our previous meeting, is that there are some hardships in the industry with the seasonal employees necessary during harvest time. You have a greater need to get people into the program, get them badge, and let them work for a week to two weeks, and then it's over. And then they move on to some other part of the state, some other part of the, you know, the country, whatever they do. You know, the seasonal program seems to be a bit migrant. So, there is, there's a fluctuation there that our program does delay if they don't get their applications in on time. And that does cause issues with getting their product to harvest in an efficient manner. In addition, we've found that just predominantly, the active cannabis growers under a permit are predominantly good actors. We don't have the crime that you would normally see in illegal cultivation sites. And working with the Sheriff's Department, especially in the ad hoc committee that we're currently in, the data on criminal activity is incredibly low. There's only been a handful to the tune of six or seven activities that the sheriffs would call out on legal cultivation sites. I mean, legal cultivation sites. And those were either theft or breaking and entering or something like that. Very low occurrence of criminal activity. The predominance of criminal activity is on illegal sites, and often it is not reported because no one is going to call the sheriff to say someone stole from my illegal cultivation site. So, we have a lot of activity that doesn't get reported, but it's not on these permitted sites. Plus, the background check that we do is less effective as the one the state does for the business owners who are going through that process of getting a state license. They have a higher threshold for their licensing. And what we are doing is essentially eliminating duplication as it relates to the business owners themselves, who now are going through two separate background check processes. With that, what we're looking to do here is identify ultimately that if the cannabis industry is to be treated like every other industry in this community, a similar regulatory method has to be employed. They're the only industry that I'm aware of that has a separate background check process. And in this case, if we are to remove this, we are remanding that back to the individual business owners to decide that if they have a concern about their employees, they can have their own business check, oh, sorry, background check process, similar to other industries. There's a handful of other things to touch on. But primarily, it served its purpose, it set the standard, it educated people on the standards, and it did give the business owners in the cannabis industry the opportunity to decide, hey, you know, we're businessmen too. We don't want criminals on our property. It's bad for business, and they've demonstrated that. So, it is a good opportunity to repeal it now, and so we're bringing it to your board for consideration, per your direction. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions from the board? Or Madam CEO?
Not a question. Chairman Germiny, I just wanted to let you know that Sheriff Di Basilio has joined us on Zoom. If there are any questions at the Sheriff's Department on this item.
Supervisor Stopper, do you want to hear it from the sheriff? Or do you have a question right now?
Well, I always want to hear from the sheriff. I have a question right now. You know, all, from the inception of the proposition with the state, and from what I recall, we still have background checks required of business owners?
That is correct at the state level.
Right, right. So, at this, and I believe that's part of our 17, our ordinance. Is that not correct?
Our ordinance, the, as 922 is very specific that in addition to other state background checks, this program will also be in place.
I think 1795 continues to require that a state license, that someone has a state license, and in order to obtain that state license, they would have received their background check from the state.
Correct.
Gotcha. So, repealing, if this is repealed, that will have no grounds on the business owners being within the-
Correct, the owners will still be background checked.
Background checked by the state, which is pretty much the DOJ process. And then, at that point, you know, where we have, from my perspective, good actors owning the business, therefore-
We have folks who have been background checked at the state, yes.
Yes, okay.
That was, that was still on the cards. Just making sure that's-
Thank you. Sheriff, would you like to pitch in?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I'm pretty much in agreement with Doug. We've gone over this, and the fact that the state is going to continue to do their background checks through the DOJ, like Supervisor Stopper talked about. I don't see a problem with it. We have not, I will repeat, we have not had an issue with any trimmers that have been on any sites. So, I think that to repeal it, to make it easier for the cannabis growers to select whom it is that they want to work on their sites. Again, they're business people, they've proven that. And we haven't had an issue, so I don't see a reason to continue with the program. It's just, it's burdensome for the county and for the growers themselves. So, I support what Mr. Oliver has presented to y'all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it. Other questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll open this up to public comment. Any public comment in the room? The drill, three minutes.
Good morning. Thank you, Ricky. I'm speaking for residents, Calaveras County residents, Crackem. And I just wanted to make a comment about, I know our sheriff just said, "No problem." Well, maybe it's because we have an ordinance that says you have to go and get a background check before you work on a project. So, maybe that's kept a lot of people out of our county trying to get jobs, because felons like these kind of jobs. So, anyway, keep that in mind, please, while we talk about this. But we are opposed to the repeal of Chapter 922. The discussion and the development of the marijuana ordinance we've had for several years. The residents of county, the county were opposed to allowing commercial marijuana industry into the county in the first place. But the Board of Supervisors decided that we needed this industry to bring in huge amounts of money to our general funds, which we now know isn't happening, and it isn't happening in our state either, especially with the reduction of a 60% to the annual taxes that they were supposed to pay and the voters had approved. So, you know, we keep just chipping away at what this industry. And right now, I'll remind you, this industry is marijuana. It's a drug. It has no value in our society. Sorry, but that's how we see it. Chapter 922 was originally developed to provide safety to the growers and the residents for the purpose of keeping them safe from potential criminals coming into the county to work in the marijuana grows. And now again, this board is looking to eliminate that layer of security. The reason stated in the board's submittal, the program causes 500 hours of workload to administer the program, and the badges brings in less fees than it actually costs. It also states that this is a way to streamline the permit process, and that is not a project, and that it's not a project of SEQA. But no one does it address or take into consideration the safety of the community, which was always an issue when we brought marijuana growing into this community. Safe, safety was, excuse me, safety was a purpose of the badge ordinance. The original badge ordinance was written actually by the Sheriff's Department, and it was brought in front of the board, and everybody agreed with, I mean, the residents agreed that this should be happening. But the board declined to allow the Sheriff's Department to take the lead on this, and instead gave it to the Cannabis Control Department to take on. And now it appears to be too much work, costs too much money. That was known at the time when the ordinance was approved. There was a fee study, there were all kinds of things about what this stuff was going to cost. And also, if the fee structure is so bad, why don't we increase it so that it covers the cost? Safety, and it's your responsibility as board members to make this community safe. So, I hope you will consider what we have just said. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a few of us from Calaveras Residents Against Commercial Marijuana that represent a whole bunch of people in the county. And at the time when this was first coming out during the residency ordinance, this whole room was filled with angry citizens, angry residents concerned about the fears they had with their kids at bus stops because they were migrant workers in sleeping bags at bus stops for their out there in sheep ranch. I remember one of them said, I cannot leave my daughter with these people sleeping here waiting for them to go to work at the pot grow. I have to take my daughter to school. I can't use the bus system. And it was like, everybody that came up here had a worry. I continually have people come in, when the pot grows are done, they come into my property, steal everything that is hand carryable and get it out the door and go because they're no longer here. It's like there's, there's this boiling spot between the less than one hundred growers and the four thousand people who live and work here every day. And to come up and say that you have to make things equitable between a, a criminal activity in a grocery store, that you have to do background checks on grocery stores or something like that, I mean, that's just ridiculous. We have a class, a federally considered drug in our county being grown at the commercial level. We don't care who in lives, except when it affects children, families. You start looking around, we have not been able to get any information out of what's going on with the hospital, how many people are coming in with drug overdoses, well, no one. If it's loose with fentanyl, if it's loose with this ISO stuff that's coming in, it is just absolutely criminal. I can't believe that people aren't noticing what's going on. We've never had graffiti in downtown San Andreas. We had it this year. Why can't we go back to caring about safety of our people who have lived here for generations? Dedicate their lives here. Produce food here. Like the, the scrub ranches, my goodness, I mean, it's not related to this situation, but it's just like, it's permeating everything. We're not taking it or giving it. Treat your neighbor as yourself. You've got neighbors that are being subjected to this, and to have little kids worrying about families, all over again, it's a worry would you repeal something that's working? If we don't have any criminal, serious criminal effect and the sheriff is making this aware, then why reduce it? Why eliminate it? I mean, it's working. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Other public comment in the room?
I, I just wanna, what I understood of, your name is Doug? I hope I pronounced it right, that you want to eliminate the background check on the employees?
Excuse me, ma'am.
Of the employees?
Us.
Okay. Of the employees of the cannabis growers? That's what he was talking about? That's what I understood about it? So why are we trying to even suggest some kind of, and safety ruling because we want to know who is in our county? We want to know there is no criminals. Now that we know that all our nation is invaded by immigrants, I'm an immigrant too, to this country, but I went on the right way. I respect the laws of this country because this is the most amazing country that I've been. And to, to not obey the laws of safety in our neighbors by eliminating the background of the employees, to me, that, that will harm. Actions and words have weight, so just consider that. That's all.
Thank you. Other public comment in the room? If you'd like to speak, please, if you guys could queue up.
Hey, I'm gonna try not to cuss because I've never been to one of these meetings, but I'm a new resident to the county. I've been here like a year. I'm from Southern California, San Diego, Ventura, you know, where the cannabis industry is, is huge. I'm a martial artist. They sponsor tons of fighters and, you know, I'm generally for it, but I, like I said, I've only lived here a year, and there's a girl across the street from me. I know the sheriff's saying there's not a lot of crime, but there's a lot of weird, uncomfortable things that make me personally feel unsafe. There's a, there was a manager across the street that just so happens to broke down, break down in front of my driveway. There's been multiple workers broken down right in front of my property, and I go out there, I'm always feeling uncomfortable and sketched out, and these are even managers of these sites. So the fact that there's background checks on them, that actually makes me feel good as a new resident, but there's always, there's a lot of weird stuff that's always happening, and I feel pretty uncomfortable a lot living in this rural county lately because of the growers. The growers, I think, kind of, it creates like this over looming pressure on people that are new and, and, yeah, so I'm just, I'm just want to share that as somebody new to the county that I would love to keep these background checks on because, and additionally, I almost got hit and run by a grow worker, like whatever the last harvest was, I don't really know the schedule because I'm not into that stuff, but she's flying down a road, not paying attention whether they're intoxicated or what, high, drunk, I don't know, but it's been multiple times that I almost been hit by someone that has a whole truckload of pot in the open. So I just think it creates, it creates some things that we shouldn't need to deal with here in the county, so.
Thank you. Any comments online?
There are no public comments online.
Very well. Seeing no further comments in the room, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Any discussion or question?
You know, this kind of goes with this and encompasses more, we've asked to streamline a lot of things. We've asked for a lot of things to come back to the board, you know. September twelfth of twenty twenty-three is what you have told us today when we discussed this during the update. We've discussed this prior. The part that, from my recollection on the discussion was the temporary workers and the once, when it came to processing people in a quantity during seasonal trimming times and everything and trying to figure our way around it. But also, we've asked for other things to come back, like, and you brought it up today, Doug, you know, the, the ag buildings, you know? When that was presented to us, it was going to be an over the counter thing. Now, you're taking stuff over the counter, but then it gets circulated throughout the county, and we have to get other departments to sign off on it for it to be finalized, and that's just not over the counter. And I think that, you know, if we're going to consider things like this, we need to do our whole job in streamlining things for all businesses across the county at the same time. And we've asked many times for other things to be brought back, and we don't see them. And sometimes I just feel like when a majority of the board asks for something to be done, we don't see it come back for a year or more, and it's not brought back because it wasn't what the department wanted necessarily to do or they agree with it. And I have an issue with that, you know? When I approve across the counter ag permits, I expect them to be across the counter. That's not the case. That's by definition, I mean, I guess we have to define what across the counter is because that's not what I see. And I know this is out of the context a little bit of what this exactly is, but it goes hand in hand with everything else, you know?
I can address those if you'd like, sir.
Oh, I'm, I'm gonna just say, after we're done with this item, I'm gonna request, you know, on a multitude of things in the past that I've been a vote yes on, I'm gonna request for a lot of those things to be brought back based on being the majority of voting on them after this, this item, sir. But...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I totally agree with what Supervisor Stoppa was saying. I've had this conversation a couple of times, and most recently, just yesterday, on exactly what he's talking about. And, and it's just not, and as I mentioned yesterday, all I see is streamlining cannabis. That's not exactly what we talked about. The whole building process, we talked about, and we gave direction to do, but yet cannabis issues keep coming here and none of the other ones keep coming back here. So it seems to be focused on this issue. The other concerns I had on this particular thing is, you said you're going to remove citations. Are we talking about when we remove nine two-two, that any outstanding citations that are out there will just go away now? We won't, we won't go with, they'll just be excused? Are there citations out there?
I don't think it's the same citation, sir.
Because that's what it's saying in this, this item, that you remove all citations.
All citations in the ordinance that reference back to nine dot two-two, not, not code compliance cases. The code compliance cases will, if there are any, remain. I'm not aware of any citations against businesses for not having CVCVs at this time, sir.
Okay, because I'm not interested in excusing any citations that were under this program, that were received under this program if they were. Those were still valid.
Yeah, I think Supervisor Toffenelli, just to clear that up, I think that the reference to citations is like literal, like citations to different parts of the code, not like code citations, yeah.
The other item I have to talk about on this is Title Seventeen has already gone through the planning commission, okay? It's due to come back to the board here relatively soon, whether it's two months, six months, whatever. Now we're asking to change Title Seventeen here instead of waiting until the entire planning commission's what they went through for the entire Title Seventeen. So I, I don't know what we're going to do when Title Seventeen comes and the seventeen point two-five or whatever tile here, they've already gave their position on it. I, I think this is premature until that comes and this board discusses it. And Sarah, you can chime in on that or not, but it has gone through the plan, the whole Title Seventeen has.
I can address that as well.
We're undermining what the planning commission, as far as I can see, by doing what we're doing, just checking out on Title Seventeen. I, I just don't agree with that. I, I, the financing portion of this, like any other thing that we do here in the county, if we have a problem of not meeting the standards of what it costs for the program, we do a fee study, and then we bring that fee study to the board and we discuss it, and then we either approve it or we deny it, and we go forward with that. There was no fee study brought to this board, but yet you're saying the financing isn't enough to take care of it. My opinion is, I'm in favor of this program. I, I think it's a good program. It, it, it allows us to at least do background checks on anybody coming into this county that's going to come work in the fields in this particular industry right now. I don't think it's gone far enough along to where, what the discussion was about if there's, because they're, they're legal growers, and I agree with you, most of, most of the farmers that are legal are good people, but it doesn't mean the people that they hire without a background check are good people. They're coming in, scoping out what's going on or doing whatever. I think this is a protection, not only for them, but a protection for the people. So I'm not in favor of this. I won't be voting on it for those particular items that we just talked about, especially Title Seventeen. I don't know why we're doing this now when it's...
I can address that now if you'd like, sir.
Pardon me?
I would like to address that now, if I may.
Sure.
Seventeen nine five and seventeen nine one of the ordinance code contain one sentence each referring to nine dot two-two. The reason why we brought it to the planning commission first was because I cannot bring an item to your board to address anything in Title Seventeen unless it goes to the planning commission. When I worked with the previous planning director, Gabriel Elliott, and with county council, we determined that we could not bring you an entire package of nine dot two-two and seventeen, nine five, seventeen nine one, because we would have to take the whole thing through the planning commission, so we bifurcated it. They both have to come forward. Well, they don't, also, they don't have to both come forward, but in, in my estimation, it's a, it's a mistake anytime a department head moves to remove a piece of, of the ordinance and leaves the cut ends laying in the ordinance code. What we're doing here is we're cleaning up the language by removing the two citations of the ordinance code. We're not affecting the Title Seventeen, and we're not affecting the IR in any sense. All we are doing is removing references directly to nine dot two-two. If your board decides not to move forward with nine dot two-two, then we would not be bringing the second component of seventeen, the repeal of seventeen nine five and seventeen nine one components, but they had to be done together. I couldn't put them all into one group, or it would be essentially, it would be inefficient and, and essentially confuse the issue by putting the two together, and it wouldn't be consistent with, with government code.
I think what Supervisor Toffenelli is referring to is the fact that the planning commission is obviously working and has been working for some time on a comprehensive zoning code update, which is true. The planning commission did already look at seventeen nine one, seventeen nine five, these particular provisions which reference, which have citations to nine point two-two in them. So these, it went to the planning commission, those two sections, and they already took action to recommend the deletion of the references to nine point two-two. So you're right, when it, but when it comes to the board, that piece will have already been to the planning commission.
Exactly. It's premature. This is premature. That planning commission decision hasn't come to this board.
And I think...
So we haven't had a discussion on it or anything else. So that's what I'm saying. Notice saying this, this whole thing is, is premature until that comes to this board.
And I think the intention Supervisor Toffenelli, since, since a non-zoning ordinance such as nine point two-two, has to come to the board of supervisors twice, once for introduction, and then a second time for adoption. I believe the intention was to coordinate when, to have them brought together to the board of supervisors for adoption. It's weird, you're right, it's weird because one goes to the planning commission prior to the board and the other comes to the board twice.
And so if it comes to this board, I think this whole thing is premature, so I won't be voting for it.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from the board? All right. Is there any comments online?
We have no online.
Come back to the board. Is there a motion?
May I comment on one more item?
Go ahead.
So some comments have been made about the progress of the building department and other matters, and in defense of my team and my, my, you know, my direction. Everything that has happened the last three years since COVID, we never brought back to your board because we just got it done. I did not have to change ordinance. I did not have to do a lot of the things that would bring it to your board because once you said this is what needed to be done, we simply did it. And I have a, a list of items, and I can, I would like to apologize for not giving you a quarterly update, and I intend to start doing that moving forward, but what I would be bringing you next is a list of everything we've accomplished in the last three years because we have done a lot of streamlining. We have reduced a lot of costs. We have created new programs, and we have created a fire prevention program. We have taken, so it's not just one component of our department that we've ever been focusing on. Plus, this is an interdepartmental process to get everyone to communicate on the same plane and the same measure to continue to speed up the process, and that takes time. So I can say that I take full responsibility for not updating you regularly on our achievements, but they were not things that required ordinance modification, and I take my marching orders very seriously, and so they got done. So I'll be reporting all that out to you very shortly. I don't want that in any way to reflect upon any work we're doing here because we approached this target the same way every other thing you've given us, with due diligence and with communication with other departments, and we've been very successful.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board. Is there a motion to approve? It's nine point two-two? I mean, item number twenty-five?
Twenty-eight, sorry.
That's what I get for not putting on my glasses when I looked down on my piece of paper. Five did look like, eight did look like a five. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Stoppa or is there a second? I have a second. No one else wanted to? Madam Clerk, will you please call it all, and I will vote last.
Okay. District two? I'm sorry, your district? District one?
No.
District three?
I'm gonna change.
Sorry.
No.
District four? No. District five?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
So...
Any else? Three, two. Thank you, Doug. Thank you.
Sir, take up, to take up a question?
Let's get to Supervisor... Let's get to Supervisor.
Okay.
Announcements, and that'd be appropriate then, Supervisor Stoppa.
In compliance with government code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out.
Sheriff Stoppa, you had some points you wanted to make?
Beyond the stuff within, you know, their discretion, that's not ordinance. The fees were part of the, one of the ordinances that were, ran within the building department that we voted on, which included the fire marshal fees and the fire marshal. That is something I would like to bring back if the board would like to. And then with that consideration of giving it back to the, the fire jurisdictions when it came to the fire marshal. There's talk between some of the fire jurisdictions, and I, my understanding it, well, I do know for a fact, for, for instance, Calaveras Consolidated never gave theirs away. They, they held on to it. And there's quite a few other fire districts, I think, that want to take it back. So I think at this point, it might be causing us more hardship than help when it comes to us running the fire marshal through the building department. That's something I would like to reconsider.
So just like summarize.
Oh, and the fees.
What you'd like is to have a, is have an item brought forward, discuss the fees for the fire marshal and the fire marshal program overall?
Yes. Yes. And the fees for the building department overall. Also, another discussion, I guess during the update, we can do, give clear direction. And I think that, you know, I, I have some issues with how it's done. And we talked about it during that time, when we asked for certain things to be done, especially when it came to metal buildings, that, you know, I, it's, we have the authority to make the decision as the board. And I don't believe that the board was heard properly when we gave direction for what to come back with in the future.
Is that a consensus of the board, that you'd like to see these two items, one a fee, one a discussion with possible action item for fire, for the fire marshal fees? And the second one is to have a discussion, possible action for fees for the building department? Is that?
Is there anything you would like to elaborate on with that, Mr. Toffenelli?
I think the discussion over counter permits that we already had a discussion and gave direction to, I think that's part of it. And whether we have to put an ordinance in place, or talk about an ordinance, or change an ordinance, or whatever, I think it needs to be clearly stated that we're looking forward to what we gave directions to. So I'm in favor of what Supervisor Stoppa said.
This incorporates a lot of different things. I don't think they all fall within the same schedule, especially when it comes to fees. I know part of the fire marshal thing does.
Is there, is that what the board would like to do as a group?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm CEO. We have a direction for two items to come back from the building department? Are you clear on what the direction is?
I am. And I believe Mr. Oliver's here now as well, but.
We're not having a discussion on it at this point.
Right.
Putting this on the future agenda.
Yes.
All right. Anything else?
There's a lot of things, Mr. Sheriff, but I think I'll just keep it down to that right now.
Okay. Supervisor Toffenelli?
I have nothing to report.
Sheriff Paul Dorff?
Yes, I attended the April 15th Central Sierra Child Services meeting with Supervisor Toffenelli. And also, I wanted to put a shout out to the Spartan group. There's another Spartan race coming up on June 2nd. It's a wonderful team building, and I know that they're looking for other people from the county to join the Spartan race. And it's, it's a gas. I was, I shouldn't say running, I was waddling along with Christina, who said she graduated in '09. And I said, oh, via police academy? No. And I just said, no high school. And I was like, I graduated high school in '79. It's for everybody, what I want to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Mr. Sheriff, real quick. We had a wonderful group of people here today from PEC TV, and a great group of kids that are learning filmmaking. And I just want to ask Supervisor Heberty, with all his experience, if maybe he could stop by there and offer some, you know, help.
Thank you. I definitely will. And we have some great filmmakers in this, I mean, Academy Award nominated filmmakers in our county, and we'll definitely be working with them.
Perfect. Thank you.
Madam CEO?
I have nothing.
Madam Counsel? All right. We are going to adjourn the regular meeting, and we'll return, we'll go back into closed session to finish up our morning work, and we'll report at the next meeting. This meeting, all meetings stands adjourned.